I'd like to thank everyone for joining us for the May 14, 2024 City Council meeting. This public meeting of the City Council is recorded on Zoom with a link that is posted on the agenda. If you are calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. You are watching on a computer or device, there is a raised hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications and public hearings to be recognized to speak. If technical difficulties arise and the Zoom link is interrupted during an in-person hybrid meeting of the City Council and a quorum is present, the meeting may continue after efforts have been made to reestablish the link. The minutes shall note the interruption. It is the finding of the City of Gloucester that no individual should be denied equal treatment, equal treatment or opportunity because of their age, ancestry, color, disability, including intellectual and developmental, mental disability, family status, immigration status, gender identity, identity or expression, military status, marital status, national origin, race, religion, sex or sex orientation. This evening, we are joined here with Ward Two City Councilor Dylan Benson, Council at Large Valerie Gilman, Ward Four Counselor Frank Majorta, Ward One Counselor Scott Memmon, Councilor at Large Jason Groh, and Ward Five Counselor and Counselor Vice President Sean Nolan. We're anticipating that Counselor at Large Worthley will join us shortly. And I am Tony Gross, City Council President. Also in attendance from the city staff is our City Clerk Grace Borrier, our Assistant City Clerk Danielle Argentino, and I am looking. And I'm sure other people are going to join us, but that is who is with us right now. And C A O Jill Cahill has joined us. And I would like to, Counselor Gilman, if you would lead us in the flag salute and a moment of silence. And I think, would you like to do it? And Sean Nolan will lead us in a moment of silence for Sam Shalito.
Fudge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
I'd like to take this moment of silence for Mr. Shalino. He owned and operated Shalino's Pharmacy for a lot of years in Gloucester. He helped a lot of people in the city in times of needs. Back in the day when insurance wasn't that available, especially with a lot of fishermen, Mr. Shalino always made sure that people had what they need to live a healthy life and worked out their problems with their, their family to make it work. He then worked at Walgreens and finished out his career after selling out to them. He was a advocate in a lot of boards on the city and a true companion to Gloucester in helping people with medical needs, especially the people that couldn't afford it. And he was just a wonderful person. He leaves besides sons and daughters and grandchildren, and they all contribute to our city the same. Just a wonderful family, and he'll be sadly missed.
And also our City Auditor Kenny Costa has joined us. Next order of business, Madam Clerk?
Oral Communications.
Oral Communications. The public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communication shall allow any resident and/or property owner and/or business owner who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council, make their statement without debate, and the City Council will refer matters to the office of the mayor. Person speaking under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes each. Is there anyone in the audience? Please state your name and address.
This is on? Yes. So I'm Sunny Robinson. I live at 20 Harvard Street, and I thank you for your time and attention tonight. I come before you tonight for, to ask for reconsideration of the April 9 antisemitism resolution that you all passed. But understand me clearly, please, not to oppose such a resolution, but instead to ask, is this the best way to go about what you were trying to do? Indeed, I am glad to see my community attempt to find a way to address hate speech and actions. But there are some other important questions to ask. Why this resolution? Why any resolution when we already have an anti-discrimination resolution and a civility ordinance? Is the answer because at this moment there is special concern in time for antisemitism? But if so, then why just antisemitism? Why not also speaking out against Islamophobia, anti-Muslim and anti-Arab and anti-Palestinian racism? The horrendous incidents of hate speech and actions against Jewish people and against Muslim people, Arabs and Palestinians are equally well documented. Why not at the least write a full proclamation at this moment in time? Why not better still deepen the current anti-discrimination policy to be more explicit? Even more specifically, I request that you consider this proclamation in light of those and perhaps similar questions, and request that you send this proclamation back to the mayor and ask that he send it to the Human Rights Commission for their deep involvement in reconsidering it. Especially reconsider this particular definition that has been used, which is currently drawing extensive criticism from all over the world, a fact that you might not have been very much aware of. Even that criticism is coming from one of its key drafters, Dr. Kenneth Stern, because of the way in its explicit examples, not so much in the actual definition, but in the examples it refers you to, conflates or at least confuses criticism of the government of Israel with antisemitism. Are you aware, for example, that there is a document signed by more than 1,000 Jewish scholars that advocates against using this particular definition, and better still suggests a more appropriate definition? At least one with explanations that are clearer than the examples given in the I H R A definition? Please?
10 seconds.
Okay. So please, thank you, Val, send it back to the mayor and ask that he involve the Human Rights Commission in reconsidering whether there is a better way to achieve the anti-hate speech and action proclamation you were pursuing. Thank you for your time.
Name and address for the record. Thank you. And if there's, if you'd like to leave anything with the City Clerk?
Hi.
Why don't you wait one second?
Hi, my name is Saltona Berdikeva, 33 Middle Street. Last week at the City Council's Planning and Development Subcommittee meeting, Attorney Joel Favazza presented a housing development plan for 151 Main Street. One thing that stuck with me at that meeting was that he reassured the City Council members a couple of times that he sent a butter notices about the project via certified mail. Last summer, my husband and I learned about the 20 Main Street development project after the Z B A and H T C had already approved it. We learned about it from a neighbor. We visited the Community Development Department in Gloucester to get notice copies or proof of certified mail, but were told to contact 20 Main LLC's lawyer, Deborah Ellison. When I called her in early August 2023 to request copies and receipts of any certified mail, she bluntly told me, I do not need to provide you with anything, and hung up. We later obtained a copy of H T C notice from April, dated April 14, 2023. We had already been living in our house for four months, four and a half months by then. So there was plenty of time for us to get it if it was ever sent. We also requested a copy of the Z B A notice about the 20 Main Street development, but never received it, leaving us unsure if it was ever sent to our address. The H T C notice from April 2023 was vague and unclear. It simply stated that the City of Gloucester Historic District Commission would hold a remote public hearing via Zoom for a certificate of appropriateness for 20 Main LLC, signed by Deborah Ellison, and included meeting details. Living in the historical district, we could be invited to any meeting for minor changes to properties, whether it's door or window change. But this notice failed to mention that it concerned a major multi-housing development affecting the entire West End and Historical District. In contrast, there's another notice from, for a different project dated October, from H T C, October 23, 2023, for 7R Washington Street, which provided detailed information about removing vinyl siding, repairing wood shake siding, replacing roofing, and relocating doors for code compliance. The discrepancy raises major questions about the inconsistency in notice content. Why aren't developers, the Z B A or lawyers of the developer, held accountable for ensuring all necessary notices are sent to property owners via certified mail? Why certified mail is not a requirement? These inconsistencies and lack of participation from direct abutters in the decision-making or even being informed should be grounds for rejecting the 20 Main Street project outright.
10 seconds.
Now the 20 Main Street developer is seeking approval from the planning board and City Council. He submitted 50 support letters for this project, and most of them come from his tenants at One School Street and business owners who rent space from him on Main Street. We, in the meantime, submitted a petition with 200 signatures opposing this development. So we really urge you to consider very carefully the contrast between the questionable support letters from the developer and where the position of the public stands when you review this project. Thank you.
Would you like to leave that with? Thank you. And I'd also like to note that Counselor Worthley has joined us. I neglected to before the last speaker. That's okay. Thank you, John.
Good evening. My name is Susan Nicholson. My name is Susan Nicholson. I live at 5 Rowley Shore in Gloucester, Massachusetts. Like the first speaker, I'm here to request reconsideration of the April 9 proclamation endorsing the I R A definition of antisemitism. And along the same lines that was suggested, that the mayor refer it to the Human Rights Commission for further development with the City Council. Not because I don't think it's vitally important to combat antisemitism, but because the I R A definition is the wrong tool to use. At the time the council voted to adopt the proclamation, it understandably regarded the I R A definition as uncontroversial. That, in fact, is not the case, as I hope to explain. Last year, the American Bar Association considered a resolution urging city and state governments to condemn antisemitism as defined by I R A. In response, the American Civil Liberties Union wrote a letter to the A B A commending their involvement in fighting antisemitism, but strongly urging them to remove all mention of the I R A definition from their resolution. The I R A definition, the A C L U wrote, quote, "has been instrumentalized again and again to delegitimize critics and criticism of Israel and its policies, and to suppress voices and activism in support of Palestinian rights." The definition, the A C L U continued, quote, "has been used consistently and nearly exclusively not to fight antisemitism, but rather to defend Israel." The very next month, the A B A passed a revised antisemitism resolution from which all mention of the I R A definition had been struck. In other words, the American Bar Association continues to believe city councils like this one should condemn antisemitism, but not with reference to the I R A definition. There are others, as Sunny has mentioned. Even the lead drafter of the definition, Kenneth Stern, urged the A B A not to reference it. But you may ask, looking at your proclamation and the definition quoted there, it doesn't say anything about Israel, so how could it be used to defend Israel? The answer to that is in the 11 examples that are considered the official examples that follow the citation of the, of the I R A definition. If you look on the I R A website, immediately following the definition are the 11 examples. Seven of the examples do mention Israel, three in ways that clearly conflate criticism of Israel with antisemitism. According to seven, example seven, claiming that the state of Israel is a racist endeavor is antisemitic. Now, as some of you may know, several of Israel's leading human rights organizations. All right. This is, this is a definition according to which many people in Israel and even Israel's newspapers and human rights organizations would be considered antisemitic. That's the, not the kind of definition that we want to have that suppresses discussion, open discussion of very important issues. The issue is not whether or not Israel is anti, commits apartheid, but whether we can discuss that openly. Thank you very much.
Will you state your name and address?
My name is Alex Blumenthal. I live at 30 Lincoln Street in Gloucester. I'm a mathematician and a scientist. I'm also a Jewish grandson of Holocaust survivors. I appreciate the opportunity to address for Gloucester City Council today. Given my family history, I'm only too aware of the historical and ongoing realities, dangers, and devastating consequences of antisemitism. Hatred of Jews has ancient roots. It took on an especially pernicious form in the earliest 20th century in fascist Europe, where it ultimately led to the industrialized murder of 6 million Jews. And it persists to this day in this country, for example, at the Unite the Right Rally in Charlottesville, Virginia in 2017, where dozens of white supremacists gathered to chant, Jews will not replace us. I am grateful that this City Council appreciates the seriousness of the scourge of antisemitism. And no doubt the intent to the recent proclamation was to recognize and oppose this abhorrent phenomenon. Unfortunately, I cannot support the proclamation itself, which is about endorsing a particular definition of antisemitism that has been widely recognized as deeply problematic. I'd like to draw the council's attention to the attached statement by concerned Jewish faculty, which has now been signed by over 1,100 Jewish scholars. Among them, let me highlight a few. Omer Bartov is an Israeli historian and professor of Holocaust and genocide studies at Brown. Deborah Dwork is an American historian and founding director of the Center for the Study of Holocaust Genocide and Crimes Against Humanity at the City University of New York. Lawrence Tribe is perhaps the nation's preeminent constitutional lawyer and scholar, having won 35 cases before the Supreme Court and holding Harvard's most distinguished title of university professor. In their statement, these scholars and experts all affirm, and I quote, "Criticism of the state of Israel, the Israeli government, policies of the Israeli government, or Zionist ideology is not in and of itself antisemitic." We accordingly urge our political leaders to reject any effort to codify a definition of antisemitism that conflates antisemitism with criticism of the state of Israel. This includes ongoing efforts to codify the I R A working definition of antisemitism, which has been internationally criticized for conflating antisemitism with legitimate criticism of Israel," end quote. The international criticism links to a joint letter by 104 Israeli, American, and other organizations urging the United Nations to resist pressure to adopt I R A. This statement continues, and I encourage you to read it on your own time. I'll add, "The I R A definition erases a century of Jewish opposition to Zionist or ethno-nationalist ideology, including such luminaries as Albert Einstein and Hannah Arendt. It also marginalizes a significant component of the American Jewish community today. To illustrate, a poll from several years ago found that 40% of American Jews under age 40 and a quarter overall believe Israel commits the crime of apartheid. While I am not here to debate this proposition, I do want to note that under I R A example seven, since apartheid is a form of racism, the proposition would be characterized as antisemitic, we are thus led to the perverse conclusion that all these American Jews, rather than forming opinions based on evidence available to them, are animated by a hatred of their own people. Beyond suppressing critically important debate, we find ourselves maligning and harming some of the very individuals we were intending to protect. Such policing of Jewish thought is itself a form of antisemitism."
10 seconds.
"I therefore urge this council to reconsider its proclamation endorsing the I R A definition, and I thank you all for your time and attention today."
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Scott Richardson. I'm at 112 Magnolia Ave. I want to start by affirming what Sunny, Susan, and Alex have all said. I think that a reconsideration of the I R A definition of antisemitism adopted by the City Council in early April is necessary for the reasons mentioned, and that the place for that reconsideration is the Gloucester Human Rights Commission. Furthermore, while we rightfully attempt to isolate, define, and condemn antisemitic hate here in Gloucester, we must do the same for Islamophobic and anti-Arab racism in the city as well. According to reports by the Council on American-Islamic Relations, last year across the U.S. saw the highest number of anti-Muslim reports in their entire 30-year history, a startling figure when we consider the horrifying rise of Islamophobia and anti-Arab hate during the Iraq War and September 11th, following September 11th. In Massachusetts specifically, education-related bigotry and harassment doubled from 2022 to 2023, employment-related incidents more than quadrupled, and Islamophobic hate crimes increased 40% in that same timeframe. Last year, many will remember Islam Mustafa, a food vendor who was repeatedly harassed and verbally abused by an ex-State Department official for being Muslim at his own food court, cart in New York. In Vermont, three young Palestinian men were shot near the University of Vermont, where one of them, Hisham Awartani, became paralyzed from the injuries. And last September, here in Massachusetts, a woman used racist speech and harassed Maya Jamaladeen, a Muslim or Arab Melrose City Councilor, and physically assaulted the counselor's husband. Anti-Arab racism and Islamophobia are rising dramatically, and just as we need to combat antisemitism with a careful definition put in place, we must combat these other forms of hate and bigotry in our community as well. Additionally, the place for that discussion and implementation, as already suggested, I believe, is in the Human Rights Commission and not in the City Council. Thanks for your time.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Terrence Cudney, and I live at One School Street, apartment number 523. I would simply like to affirm and concur in solidarity with the first, third, fourth, and fifth speakers on the question of how best to address the very real issue of antisemitism in our community by reconsidering the proclamation on antisemitism and sending it to the Human Rights Commission. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in attendance in the auditorium who would like to speak under oral communications? All right, there's a couple of hands raised online. Madam Clerk, could you bring in the first one? Thank you. State your name and address for the record, please.
Did you call my name? It's Teresa Zing.
You're up.
Okay. I'm calling because I'm concerned about the particular circumstances surrounding the termination of our longstanding and effective harbor master. I'm further take issue with the waterways board and the technical difficulties that supposedly happened that resulted in the video of that meeting being taken down and thereby removing the ability of the citizens to observe and understand what happened at that meeting. I think that there are many of us that are very concerned about the particular circumstances, particularly given the history of Mr. Shimataro's relations with the prior administration. And I think that we need to, you know, it's really about transparency in the operations of our government. If there was a reason that he was terminated, that we deserve the right to know what happened there, because he was very popular, very effective public servant for many years. So that's my thought about the termination of the harbor master. I'd like to see a meeting reconvened where the video is ensured to be accurate and dependable. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not sure I gave you my address. 41A Mount Pleasant Avenue, Gloucester.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Madam Clerk, can you bring in the other persons online? So Neil, you're up. You're muted.
Thank you. I'm looking for my notes.
Name and address first, please.
Yep, my name is Tracy.
Thank you.
Tracy O'Neil, 12 Friends Street. And I am here to talk about 20 Main Street. I believe that neither of the two separate proposals at 20 Main Street should be given a special permit by the City Council. Each of the two separate proposals are too large for the site, and too close to the street, too close to the neighbors on both sides, and too close to the historical neighborhood of Middle Street. Every year, Gloucester celebrates the historic buildings on Middle Street with the Middle Street Walk during Christmas time. We should respect and remember Gloucester's history all year and in years to come. We should preserve and protect our neighbors and our history, not destroy it by allowing a building to be constructed that is too big for the plot of land proposed and not in keeping with the neighborhood. So in, neither proposal should be given a special permit. Also, given the fact that the abutters did not get any notification of what was going to happen at 20 Main Street until it's too late, I believe it should go back to the drawing board and reconsidered all over again. Thank you.
Seeing none, no more. Anyone else in the auditorium? No one online with a raised hand? Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Presentation, an update from Irina McWilliam-Lopez on the John J. Meaney Affordable Senior Housing at 71 Middle Street. Hi, everyone. Irina McWilliam-Lopez, I'm the executive director of the Cape Ann Y. And I think most of Cape Ann knows of the Y as that big new facility at Gloucester Crossing. But what's actually a core part of our YMCA movement is housing, because without housing, everything else falls apart for people. I heard earlier today something that Sunny Robinson actually said in a totally different meeting, was that housing is the foundation of health. And so it's very much central to what our YMCA does. And so I'm here to make sure that as many folks as possible on Cape Ann are aware that we have an open lottery for our senior affordable housing project at 71 Middle Street. My colleague David Goodman, Goodwin, who runs housing across the YMCA North Shore Association in all of our different facilities, which house a total of 500 individuals, that includes children and families. So we started our first affordable housing facility on Middle Street, actually where the Patillo Building is. That housing facility is specifically for people that were formerly homeless. We will continue to push forward affordable housing, both as a YMCA and just within the community and with our partners, and we're very grateful for our partners. So we're grateful to have this opportunity to be sure that we spread the word, and David is going to provide more information about the specifics of the housing lottery right now, which I think is over 300 applications. When we started this project, we knew there were going to be a lot, but it's been astounding in terms of how many and how quickly applications are coming in, which I think speaks to the need in our community, particularly the need for seniors. need in our community, particularly the need for seniors.
Hey, everybody. I'm Dave Goodwin. I'm the Executive Director of Housing for the Y. Thank you for inviting me tonight. Yeah, as Irina said, we have 505 residents right now, and we're looking to add another 44 to another 88 seniors of affordable housing. Sure, sorry about that. So Irina's putting up a presentation for me right now, but we're expecting upwards of 500 applications total right now. As Irina said, we have about 300. We're going to be hosting a lottery in person at the Y when we have the lottery. So get the slides up. So our new project is going to be 44 units total. And it's going to be, like I said, for one or two people per unit. It's all one-bedroom apartments. So for some of the amenities that the building is going to include, so there's going to be an underground parking garage, which will have 27 parking spots. It's going to be first-come, first-served parking. Every unit will get one parking sticker. We're also going to have an elevator that reaches every floor. YMCA membership will be included in the rent. We're going to have an outdoor garden area. We're also going to have a cafe called Jack's Place. As I'm sure a lot of you know, Jack Meany was our former CEO. It's named after him. We're going to have a trash room on each floor, also coin-operated laundry on each floor. Each kitchen is going to be a full kitchen with refrigerator, stove, dishwasher, microwave. Some of the frequently asked questions that we've been getting is first month's rent, what is it going to cost to move in? So it'd be first month's rent plus security deposit. The security deposit is going to be equal to the first month's rent. So if it's, the rent is going to be 15, 10 for the regular rent units. And then if it's subsidized, it's going to be whatever 30% of the income for the person is. We have 18 of those units that are subsidized. Utilities, so all utilities are going to be included, other than the electric. The electric you'll have to provide yourself. The stove is going to be electric. Also washers and dryers, we do not allow them in the units, but we do have a laundry room on each floor. Parking is available. As I said, we have an underground garage that parking will be available. There is no storage on the premises. And then for pet policy, we do have a no pet policy. However, we allow service animals or emotional support companions with proper documentation. So right now, we've done a couple of info sessions in person and on Zoom to kind of spread the word, and that's exactly what we're doing tonight. So I want to thank you all for having me here to help spread the word to everybody. The application is going to be accepted until June 1st, and at that point, it's going to be the cutoff where we're not going to be accepting any more applications for the lottery. So we're going to be doing the lottery on June 10th. Right now, scheduled, that's a tentative date that may change a little bit depending on the number of applications that we get in. Like I said, June 10th is the lottery, and that's subject to change. And we're also going to be doing that in person and on Zoom as well. We'll be doing it at the Y and then also, like I said, on Zoom. And that will be found at capeannlottery.com. All of the links for all of our Zoom meetings, anything like that will be found at that website. So this is the breakdown of basically the affordable units. So as I said, we have 18 units that are set for the lower rents or the subsidized rents for 30% of your income. Then we have the 26 units there that are 60% of the AMI. 60% of the AMI right now is about $62,000 a year for one person or $71,000 for two people, depending on how many people are going to be living in the units. The lottery drawing, so I'm not going to read through this slide, but I'm just going to kind of sum it up. So the lottery process, we're going to be hosting by Maloney Properties. It's a third-party company we've hired to help us with the process, ensure that it's fair for everybody. Everybody gets a control number. So within a week of us doing the lottery, everybody will know what their control number is, and they can join us for the meeting to host the lottery. That will be done by Maloney through Zoom, but we will be in person at the Y to do that event, if you'd like to join us. And conclusion, so just want to say again, thank you for having us out here tonight just to spread the word. We're spreading it throughout the paper. We're spreading, I was with the Veterans Affairs Agent today. We're really trying to get the word out there and get as many people that are interested as possible. If you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Counselor Groh.
Did you mention what the minimum age is for this? This is all senior housing, so.
It is, yep. So 62 or older, and every person in the household has to be 62 or older.
Also Worthley.
Thank you both. Appreciate you coming before us. I think you were at our Budget and Finance meeting a couple months ago when we had some Community Preservation Act funds to help with this project, but that was a very small part of what makes this whole thing work. I don't expect you to be able to answer this question off the top of your heads, but it would be nice to understand how you make it work. 44 units, it just scratches the surface of the need. And it's sad, in a way, to hear that you think there'll be 500 applicants. That means 90% of the people will not get housing. If my math is right, maybe it's not right about that. And it would be great to see how we can provide services to those people as well, either be on a different waiting list or something like that with other organizations. But could you give a sort of, just a general overview of how you make the math work so that more people can, more organizations can do what you're doing?
Yeah, absolutely. So we are, as you said, we have a lot of applications coming in. We only have 44 units, so that's a staggering number of applications for the number of units we have. We're always trying to pursue new avenues for housing. We're looking in different areas throughout the North Shore. We're also partnering with Senior Care right now to have a resident service coordinator at that location. So anybody who doesn't get selected through the lottery, we're going to be helping them to see if they can find other housing elsewhere. So we're really committed to that. That's going to be a full-time role. We're really, that resident service coordinator is going to be helping everybody and anybody that needs the help, so that's why we're doing it. I mean, it's amazing the number of people that need housing right now. We have waitlists at all of our properties. Our one-bedrooms in Beverly are 10 years plus for a waitlist right now. It's insane. We also partner with the Gloucester Housing Authority for any of their projects. We refer to them. We've worked very closely with them as well. So we have a number of agencies that we work with right now to try and help people.
How does it work financially to build what you're building right now and be able to offer rents at the rates you are? Is it subsidized through the state? Is it subsidized through owners?
Yep, so it's a HUD tax credit program. So the majority of our funding comes through tax credits, and that's how we're able to actually fund this. So we have different supporters through like MHI, Home, HIF. We have a lot of different funding sources that help to make this project happen.
Thank you for sharing that.
Absolutely.
Irina, David.
So John J. Meany, Jack Meany, who this, the namesake of this building. This is not the reason why, but it was so complicated just to get that small Patillo Building off the ground, all of the capital stacking of public-private partnerships, that that was kind of the impetus for saying, now that we have this knowledge and we understand how to work this out through public and private funding, we've got to keep going, because it's very, very complicated. It takes years to put together, and there's not many organizations that can do it.
I'd be happy to attend a class that he puts on to explain it for all of us. Thank you both, Irina and David.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Counselor Nolan.
This isn't much of a question, more of a thank you. And I believe that public housing is a huge issue in affordability, and the only way to have true affordable housing is through partnerships with nonprofits and municipalities to work together. Because when you put investors into something, they're invested, and investors look for a return. So I believe this is an excellent step forward on where you guys have already started, and I look forward to more community projects with you or any other nonprofit that would like to do something with a city's assistance, because the only way to get true affordability will be without people looking to line their pockets. And thank you.
Thank you.
Val.
So at our Council on Aging meeting recently, when you presented, you were clear about the different buckets for the lottery.
Yep.
Could you just go over that again? I know you showed a.
Absolutely.
PowerPoint slide on that.
Yep.
Particularly the veterans as well, because.
Definitely.
That's a component that we should understand.
Yeah, so we have a few different, when we do lottery, we have a few different buckets that people will fall into. So again, like I said, there will be some subsidized units, so depending on your income, you may fall into one of those categories. But we also have a preference for veterans. We have five units of housing for veterans right now. So like I said, we're working with the Veterans Affairs Agent to make that happen. And then we also have a local preference, so 70% of the people that will be moving in will be a Gloucester resident or, excuse me, Gloucester resident or work in Gloucester for 70% of the units.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Val.
I would also like to thank you very much. As you say, it takes years, and now that you have this skill set, let's hope you can expand it while we may be limited in the space that we have. Any relief you can give on, you know, the North Shore, it helps us all. So I just really would like to extend our great appreciation and thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Unless you want to stay for some physics, civics lessons, you can, you can go. Could you share the PowerPoint with our clerk, and then she could share it with us? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Confirmation of new appointments.
Counselor Nolan.
Of voters, Barry Pat fulfilling an unexpired term, 2/15/27. Barry, would you like to come up to the counter and tell us a little bit about yourself? Although not needed, we all know everything well yet.
I know, you don't know everything. Barry Pat from 45 Middle Street. I am the, my mother actually escaped the Bolshevik Revolution in Ukraine, in Odessa, in 1917. My father came from Poland in 1907. He was the city physician and the sports physician for over 30 years, and if he was with us today, he'd be 120 next month. I've been in the Army for a grand total of 11 years between inactive, active, and reserve status. I've been in business here in the gas station and towing business with tallies for many years. I am the president and co-founder of the Gloucester Fund. I'm obviously a prior city councilor. I'm involved, I do our fireworks displays. This year is my 33rd year of putting on our Gloucester fireworks displays, and I'm not sure I could add more than another dozen things, but for the sake of time and everything else, here I am.
Excellent. Thank you, Barry. Before I read the motion, is there any questions or comments from any of the counselors? Counselor Benson.
More of a comment. I want to just say thank you again for stepping up, Barry, and giving your service to the city. You are a dedicated public servant. You have given service for decades to Gloucester, to our country, in our military. Thank you. I salute you, and I look forward to you bringing your experience to the Board of Registars. Thank you, Barry.
Thank you, Dylan.
Counsel Worthley.
Thank you. I just want to add to that. Barry, I think I've known you for 30 years. I'm lucky to consider you a friend. I appreciate that you're continuing to step up and support the community that you love, and I look forward to your work on the Board of Registars. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Counsel Gilman.
Just going to wait until the motion, but I will join my colleagues and note that I served as a city councilor alongside Barry. He was on P and D, and he was a pleasure to work with. So your collaborative skills are second to none, and I think you'll be perfect for this new role, so thank you.
Thank you, Val.
All right. I'd just like to say, like I've said before, I don't throw all the accolades around like they always do about you, but you've been a close friend, you've been a boss, you've been a mentor, and you've been a colleague. And I think most of all, you've been a solid citizen of the city of Gloucester, and I thank you for looking to continue with your volunteerism to make City of Gloucester great.
Thank you, Sean. Love you.
And with that being said, I have a motion. On a motion by Counsel Mujota, seconded by Counsel Grace, the Ordinance Administration Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, recommend the City Council appoint Barry Pat, fulfilling the unexpired term to the Board of Registars of Voters, term to end, 2/15/27, and I so move.
Second. Motion made by Counsel Nolan, seconded by Counsel Mujota. Discussion. I would just like to say, Barry, that your unsung dedication to the city has been unparalleled with everyone else. You do the things that, you know, you just do them. You're not looking for any accolades. You're not looking to stand in front of a parade. You're just looking to get stuff done, and you have for years, and I really appreciate all of that, and thank you for stepping forward in this very important post.
Thank you, Tony.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, eight to zero, and one absent.
Thank you, Barry. So next up, we have a Counsel on Aging, Felicia Webb. How you doing tonight, Felicia?
I am good.
If you'd just like to tell the full counsel why you'd be interested in this position?
Yep. My name is Felicia Webb. I'm at 7 Mansfield Street, Unit 3, in Gloucester. I am interested in serving on the Council on Aging, first of all, to give back to the community, but also to help improve conditions now for the current seniors and those of us, which hopefully will be everyone who will become a senior at some point in time in their life.
Excellent, thank you. So I'll read the motion, then we'll go to the counsel. On a motion by Counsel Grace, seconded by Counsel Mujota, the Ordinance and Administration Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the City Council appoint Felicia Webb as an alternate member to the Council on Aging, term to end, 2/15/27, and I so move.
Second. Motion made by Counsel Nolan, seconded by Counsel Mujota. Discussion. Counselor Gilman.
I've had the pleasure to be on the Council on Aging Board with Felicia, and we're so delighted that she's come back to continue that. It's, one of the things I really enjoy about working with you is that you're always looking for solutions. You have a very positive outlook on every challenge that we have about transportation, which is a big challenge with our seniors. And I feel so confident knowing that with this affirmative vote tonight, that you will be back working with us for the benefit of all of our seniors, so thank you.
Thank you, Val.
Counsel Nolan.
So as we had said at ONA, I'm really excited with your experience working with CADA in the transportation and as Counselor Gilman, sorry. Yeah. It said, it's a real good mix to have your opinion, your experience to work on that, whether it's on CADA or on demand, which is for everybody, but there's also breaks for seniors, whether it's bringing the trips to the malls, and just how you can work with the seniors in CADA to help out and also with the seniors. And I think it's a great mix, and I want to thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any no further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, eight to nothing, and one absent.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Eight to nothing and one absent. Next up, Counselor Nolan. We have an open space and recreation advisory committee, Christopher Leahy, as an alternate member. Christopher, come on up. If you just want to tell us a little bit about yourself and if you want to be on the commission.
Am I on? Yes. Okay, a brief bit of history. I've recently retired from a forty-plus year career at the Massachusetts Audubon Society, during which I, I was Director of Conservation for the majority of that time, overseeing the ecological management of tens of thousands of acres of wildlife sanctuaries throughout Massachusetts. This involved intensive ecological inventories of the entire biotus of this system, which we were eventually able to complete. Obviously, it took some decades to do that because there were very little records at that time. And the purpose of that, of course, was to be able to manage those sanctuaries for the benefit of biodiversity. And so that's a little bit of my, my background. And that's what has interested me in, in this agenda because of my expertise. The, one of the things that has been striking to me in being nominated here, I should say a little bit of background in that, that this new position that's being suggested for me comes after the city council, the city decided I was formerly the vice chair of the Dogtown Advisory Commission, which was a fairly new commission, but looking to oversee what I at least think is the most valuable piece of open space on Cape Anne. The decision was made that, that they were going to dissolve the commission and put it into the OSRC, the Open Space and Recreation Advisory Committee. And so that is how my nomination comes for that, for that entity. And I think that's a positive thing, as you might expect, partly because I seem to be the only member of the committee that has extensive biological background, expertise, and that kind of thing. And so I'm very glad to be on that. I am, I'm a little concerned because my influence will be somewhat diluted, so to speak, compared to the commission that I was originally scheduled to be on. But I'm delighted to be involved, of course, in the protection of Gloucester open space. And I can stop there. I could go on and on, talking about my publications and things. But if that, if that's enough, that's it.
Excellent. Thank you very much. With that being said, I'd like to read the motion. On a motion by Counselor Majota, seconded by Counselor Grace, the Ordinance and Administration Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the city council appoint Christopher Leahy as an alternate member to the Open Space and Recreation Advisory Committee, term to end, two fifteen twenty seven. And I so move. Motion made by Counselor Nolan, seconded by Counselor Majota. Counselor Nolan. First of all, thank you for coming into this committee.
Pleasure.
I've read your resume. I've known of your work for a few years now, known of you. Very productive, very smart. We have a lot of sensitive areas in the city of Gloucester that need to be protected from all types of, of elements, including human to wildlife and incursion of development as well. I don't think that you're ever going to be a smaller voice on a committee. I think people will respect you and take you at your word because you do know what you're doing. You're, you're an actual expert in an area that we actually need on this committee. And I can't thank you enough for accepting this. And I will be supporting you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much for those kind words.
Counselor Gilman.
Thank you, Counselor. Chris and I worked together on the Dogtown Preservation Commission for many years. And he was always dependable. He was always sensible. He has a no-nonsense, very deliberative understanding of everything that happens in nature, which is really impressive. And when we decided to dissolve the Dogtown Preservation Commission, the mayor's office was sensitive about wanting to make sure that we have continuity. And their suggestion was to get someone like Chris to continue as an alternate because right now the positions are full. But the alternate position allows him to attend all the meetings and then to fill in for people when need be. And the other impressive thing that I've been very happy to hear is that our chair of the, the Open Space Committee, Dan Morris, is very interested in making sure that there's continuity with the Dogtown Preservation Commission. He attended some of our dissolving meetings and spoke very openly about the importance of that. So I'm delighted that Chris is willing to continue after forty years doing such a wonderful job for the Mass Audubon in this capacity. From the bottom of my heart, thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Val.
Counselor Memard.
I'd just like to join my colleagues in thanking you, Chris, for your service and for your expertise and for the love that you have for our natural environment and how it all fits together. You're an educator at heart. And we have so many wonderful natural assets to protect, sometimes from themselves and other times from us. But your voice will be very important on this Recreation Advisory Committee. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Counselor Benson.
Thank you. I just had a quick question. How do you think we can promote greater awareness of our open?
Speak into your microphone.
Yeah, sorry. How do you think we can promote greater awareness of our open space and use of our open space?
Well, various aspects of the media, of course, are good, you know, voices for that. So I guess part of it is just encouraging. I, I am fairly visible in various or audible in various media. And so I, I, what can I say? The more, the more, the better, kind of. I think the good news is that more and more people are becoming involved in the protection of open space, understand what the value of it is for a whole spectrum of reasons. And so I'm quite hopeful that that's not going to stop. That's going to increase, if anything, as people understand that we are losing species at a great rate. You know, we've, we've, we've lost by current research, something close to fifty percent of the bird populations of North America. So there's some fairly dire statistics out there. But there are also a lot of good people working to reverse that. So I, I, as some of you know, am not loathe to speak out in all possible forums in promotion of the conservation of the natural world, so.
Speak right into the microphone, otherwise it doesn't go on the Zoom.
Yeah. No, no worries. I appreciate. Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mr. Leahy, and thank you for all your dedication and sharing the, that information. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Counselor Worthley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Leahy, we're very, very lucky to have you. I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. I will be supporting your nomination to this board or your appointment to this board. But I do have one question. A couple of months ago, when the mayor had proposed to us consolidating the downtown, I mean, so the Dogtown Advisory Commission, the Magnolia Woods Committee, and the Stage Fort Advisory Commission, some questions were raised, sort of to the tail end of that process, to suggest that by doing that, we eliminate some of the focus, because each of those have different focuses, right? Stage Fort Park has a very different focus than Dogtown, for example. And the commitment was that by merging them, there'll be some efficiencies somewhere. But it was after that that I heard some people say that they really felt like they hadn't been involved in that process. And this is not an attempt to knock the mayor's initiative. I just want to understand it better. We didn't hear from people at the meetings, at the hearing, when we made those exchanges. But is it your opinion that Dogtown is less served by having merged those organizations into this one committee? If you don't want to answer that, that's okay, too.
No, I, I don't hesitate to answer it. And the answer would be, yes. I mean, I, well, I'm in a bit of a waiting game here. I don't see how. I'm, I'm familiar with the OSRC's agenda. It's quite a full agenda. I just finished reading again the city's open space plan. It's very lengthy. It's a very good document, et cetera. But Dogtown, in my view, and maybe you can call me biased if you want, almost four thousand acres of an incredible concentration of biological diversity. From my point of view, it is the single most important area of open space. And it is still not fully protected. And it is, a number of us have been working for years to document the biodiversity of Dogtown, et cetera. And so I am perhaps understandably concerned that the focus on Dogtown will almost inevitably be diluted by the fact that the OSRC has a broad agenda, as it should, to look at all open space, including recreational open space in Gloucester. And so I, you know, I would be kidding you and myself by saying that I'm not concerned. And, and time will tell. You know, we're just starting this process. I'm certainly going to give it my all and to be open-minded about how things proceed. But, yeah, and I, and believe me, I do understand the burden on, you know, city officials responsible for environmental issues. And that there's an administrative issue in terms of, and this was an attempt to consolidate that and simplify the agenda for city officials and others. But perhaps there's a downside. And time will, time will tell how that sorts out.
Thank you for sharing that concern. I have no more questions. Thank you.
All right. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? The ayes have it. Eight to zero, one absent. Thank you. Thank you very much, Chris.
Thank you.
Counselor Nolan. So next up, we have the Zoning Board of Appeals. We have Ronald Wilson as an alternate member, term to end, two fifteen twenty seven. Ron, if you could just come up and tell the full counsel a little bit about yourself, I'd really appreciate that.
Hello. I moved up to Gloucester after forty years in Boston, Cambridge area, about three, four years ago, and have been looking for a place where I could contribute what I think of my peculiar set of skills. I like details. I'm much more of an operations, make something work than a policy-setting person. So when I saw that this opportunity presents itself, I attended a few meetings and I saw that this is pretty much exactly what I want to be doing. And I have absolutely no problems with sitting on the bench as an alternate and learning as time goes by from the, the very qualified people who are voting members of the zoning board.
Excellent. Thank you, Ron. With that being said, I'd like to read the motion. And on a motion by Counselor Grace, seconded by Counselor Majota, the Ordinance and Administration Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the city council appoint Ronald Wilson as an alternate member to the Zoning Board of Appeals, term to end, two fifteen twenty seven. And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Nolan, seconded by Counselor Majota. Discussion. Counselor Majota.
Ronald, it was great talking to you last week at the O N A. I supported you then. I'll support you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Nolan. Ron, it was a pleasure to meet you and to talk to you at O N A. And your life experience and how you feel about architecture and environment and how a city should be is going to be greatly appreciated around here. I love the fact that you have patience and that you want to wait on the bench. That's always what the smart people will say. And I look forward to you being with us. And I definitely will be supporting you again tonight.
Thank you.
Counselor Grow.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I'm just curious how long you've been paying attention to what the ZBA has been doing in terms of their activities?
For about ten weeks.
Can you, can you just briefly give me a sense of what your, you, you think the mission of the ZBA is in terms of, as an entity in planning and development in the city?
What I've observed and also through conversations with Mr. Prezi and others is that the, the board is there to interpret and provide a little bit of umpiring and a little bit of buffer for residents. There are some situations where a resident wants to put in a, a storage shed. And if you follow the letter of the zoning board, you have setbacks. You've got to be ten or fifteen or twenty feet away from the side. And that's not where very many people want to put a storage shed. They don't want to have it in the middle of their lawn. And in many places, there's not going to be an issue of putting that over in the corner of the property. And it's the zoning board's job to, to review the situation, make sure that it is a situation that isn't going to, like, stick it in somebody's front yard, and grant the, the pass. And there, there are other situations where the, the standard is fifty, more than fifty percent of the property, the lots in Gloucester are already non-conforming. And the buildings on those lots, fifty percent of them are non-conforming. So a big part of what the zoning board seems to need to do is to determine, is the change that the owner wants to make a, not increasing the non-conformity. So, you know, just because you're out of conformity doesn't mean it in and of itself is bad. You know, if, if you're going from a fifteen-foot setback back to a ten-foot setback, from a fifteen to a, maybe a twenty foot, you're moving back in the space. So you're creating less of a non-conformity. And the, the zoning ordinances want the zoning board to make that call. So the zoning board has that umpiring role. And I've already seen in the dozen or so cases that I've listened to, that, you know, that can be a real head spinning situation. But I'm, I'm very happy to, to have my head spun and, and work this out. Because if, if there isn't somebody trying to help make the zoning ordinances work, they won't work.
I, I happen to think the ZBA is probably one of the toughest boards to be on for precisely the reasons that you're stating.
Can I back out now?
Yeah. You've got about two seconds because we're about to say. But I do appreciate you stepping forward. I appreciate your willingness to, to take on that role because I think it is a vastly important one in the city. Oftentimes, you're going to find yourself, I, I always joke in the city council, every decision we make, you make a permanent or a temporary friend and a permanent enemy. That's definitely going to be the case on the ZBA. You're going to make a lot of people unhappy. But if you do your job right, you'll be making the right decisions for Gloucester. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? You can afterwards, too. It's not, he'll be handcuffed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Eight to zero, one absent.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, eight to zero, one absent.
You had your chance.
Thank you, Ron.
Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda.
Okay, the consent agenda. Would anyone like to pull any matter off of the consent agenda? Yes. Okay, so, anyone else want to pull anything off the consent agenda? We have to move that first.
I'll move to approve the agenda as amended.
All those in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, eight to zero, and one absent. That was, motion was made by Councilor Gilman, seconded by Councilor Memard. Thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Big Councilor Majota will explain.
Tell us why it's going to be amended.
We'll talk to her. Councilor Grace and I would like to just bring this to ONA to clarify some of the language that we've seen for Angle Street. So we're going to withdraw it. We're going to take it off and resend it. Resubmit it to ONA.
Thank you.
Should we make a motion to withdraw without prejudice?
Well, is it going back to ONA without traffic? Is that the concern?
No, we're going to resubmit, so it'll start again. Fresh, right? All right. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The May 9th Budget and Finance Standing Committee report.
Councilor Memard, you're up. I would like to point out that while there is only two votes on this, and Councilor Worthley was absent, it was an excused absence.
Surgery counting isn't a good excuse.
We all agree.
Thank you.
So Budget and Finance met last Thursday evening at the Harbor Masters office. We just have two matters for your consideration. One is a spending and one is an accepting. So they're balanced. The first item is a memorandum from our DPW director and 2024 SBT number 10, in the amount of $150,000. This is for various Department of Public Works projects. And I'll go ahead and read the motion. On a motion by myself, seconded by Councilor Gross, Budget and Finance Committee voted two in favor, zero opposed, one absent, to recommend that the city council approve a supplemental appropriation, 2024 SA 21, in the amount of $150,000, from the DPW Highway Force Receipts Reserved for Appropriation Fund Transfers to General Fund Account Number, as noted, to the DPW Public Services Purchase of Services Account Number, as noted. And this is to be used for the purpose of funding a number of paving, landscaping, and supplies associated with projects throughout the city in the coming months, and I so move.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A motion was made by Councilor Memard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Sorry to not admit that. Count, all those opposed? The motion passes, eight to zero, one absent.
And our second item from Budget and Finance this evening, on a motion by myself, seconded by Councilor Gross, Budget and Finance voted two in favor, zero opposed, and one absent, to recommend that the city council accept various cash donations under Mass General Law 4453A to support the council on aging, in the total amount of $2,070, from the following members and business partners in our community, who are Robert McCray, Ruth Burtwell, Sarah Waite, Marilyn Grant, and Jerry Fabularo, for a total of $2,070, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Memard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Eight, oh, opposed? None. The ayes have it, eight to zero, one absent. Hold on one second. I have to confer. So we are going to back up a little bit, and we are going to withdraw the motion, Councilor Majota's motion. Councilor, would you like to make a motion to withdraw that without prejudice? We're going back, we're backing up.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to withdraw without prejudice.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Majota, counted, counted, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, eight to zero, one absent. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The May 6th Ordinances and Administration Standing Committee report.
I have an info only. There's no action required tonight. There's going to be the City Council 2024-011, Grace, amend GCO Chap. 22, Section 2270 dot one, residence sticker park only by adding Western Avenue on the East Hurley side, from number six to number 26, from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, from May 1st to September 15th. And this has been advertised for a public hearing on May 28, 24. And if I could just give a little background on this tonight for Councilor Grace, who cannot be in attendance. This is basically the section of property on the ocean side from Tally's Corner down to the tavern. And there's been a lot of complaints of people that are residents, they have a hard time finding parking when they come back during the day, or when they go back and forth. And what they're looking to do is to give it a resident sticker park and only to help them with this. They understand that it's resident parking, and that's where it's at. I'm not going to add anything other than that, because this will be coming before us. But I just wanted to give an update for Councilor Grace for that to be said tonight. And thank you.
Thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The May 8th Planning and Development Standing Committee report.
Councilor Grow.
Thank you very much. Two items, very quickly. Special counsel permit 2024-002, Main Street 151. We held a site visit on Saturday where we reviewed the proposed building of the four units. That will come back before us at the next P and D meeting next week. And the special counsel permit 2024-003, Main Street number 20, is still at planning and the planning board. So we await their review and recommendation, and that will be on the agenda as soon as that is forthcoming. That's it.
Thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
For council vote to adopt the special speed regulation number 7970 from the Mass DOT to reduce the speed limit on Walnut Street to 20 miles per hour.
Does the Gilman adopt?
I move to adopt. Second.
Motion made to adopt by Councilor Gilman, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Discussion. Councilor Gilman.
So I'm really grateful that our new Ward Four city councillor, Frank Majota, took this to the next level. We've been working on this for about three years after we had a site visit with about 20 members of the neighborhood with our police chief, Ed Conley. And so we're delighted that there's going to be consistency now in Anasquam for the two major public roads. 30 miles an hour is way too fast, and that's what we have to default to. And 20 is much more reasonable, particularly because Council President Gross knows this well, because he lives in Anasquam. There's no sidewalks, there's a lot of traffic, there's a lot of foot traffic, there's a lot of bicyclists, a lot of baby carriages, and there are a lot of fast cars. So this is just one really positive step, and I'm grateful that Frank took this to the, to the finish line. So I will be supporting this adoption. Thank you.
Thank you. More discussion. Councilor Nolan.
If I'm allowed to speak of the illustrious Ward Four. Walnut Street is a very small street, and there's particularly two dogs that I'm very concerned with to make sure that they get around the neighborhood safe. The one thing that did stand out in the traffic report, and something that came up with, was the amount of people that don't stop at the stop sign on Walnut Street, and the amount of tickets that actually get given for people that don't stop on Walnut Street, and the high amount of numbers of the people that live on Walnut Street that don't stop on Walnut Street coming onto Leonard. So the speed limit is one thing, but also we, we need all residents of the city of Gloucester to be very conscious of what's going on around you. The speeding has been out of control. The tickets are up. It's not the police department's fault that you're in a hurry, or you don't want to stop. It's for the pedestrian's safety, and that's the utmost concern. But 30 is high for Walnut. And I will be supporting this tonight.
Any more discussion? And thank you for the protection of the dogs. When I can walk them again, I'll be appreciative. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. The ayes have it, eight to zero, one absent. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Counselor's request to the mayor.
Councilor Gilman, you start off.
I have no requests. I just do want to remind people that tomorrow's the beginning of our budget process. It's meeting number one at the Harbor Masters office, or you can zoom in. It's important. And you can also check out the budget book, which is now on the top of the homepage at the City of Gloucester website. So these are great meetings, really important to...
Starting at 9:00 AM.
Not 9:00. What did I say? Okay, thank you. But anyway, what, are you looking at me?
Will you please stop harassing the other councillors?
I'm, I'm looking at you. I thought you pointed at me.
Is there more?
And I have no other things to report, except I'm just looking forward to going to the budget meeting tomorrow.
Councilor Grace is not here, so I go next, correct? And I'm going to not wait till last. Saturday is the GEF Arts Festival, for those of us who enjoy that sort of thing. It starts at, at 11:00, and it goes to 4:00. And there will be just a wonderful array of all the work that, and we can see it here in City Hall right now, of all the work. I wish we could turn the cameras on to them, of all the work that our very talented and wonderful students of our schools produce. And it's a really great day for the citizens to come out, and hopefully the weather will cooperate. Thank you. That's it. Who's next? Gilman. Grow.
It's me. You can point at me all you want, though. Just want to give an update on the 3A process. There are a series of meetings coming up that people might want to attend and be aware of. The first one, public meeting, is May 21st, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, Cairo's Auditorium. That is a question and answer. Any Gloucester resident is welcome to come and ask questions. It's not a public hearing, so confine yourself to questions and clarifications as opposed to positions which will be heard at public hearings as we move through the process. The second meeting is June 6th. That is a joint planning board, planning and development meeting, where the draft proposals from the consultant will air their first, will be aired for the first time. That is not a public hearing or a forum, but it is obviously a public meeting. You're welcome to attend. And then on June 12th, there'll be a public forum from 6:00 to 8:00 in Cairo's here, again, for questions and answers on the draft proposals as they are initially put forward. Those proposals are not set in stone, won't be set in stone until after public input has been heard and considered. So I do encourage you to come and be productive and, and be part of the process. That's it. That's all I got.
Thank you. I, I didn't mention where the GAF. It is happening here at City Hall and at the Cape Ann Museum. The, the library was always very involved in it, but now an awful lot is going to be at the, at City Hall and Cape Ann Museum and all throughout the neighborhood. Councilor Majota.
Yes, I will be having a Ward Four meeting tomorrow at 6:30 in the Lanesville Community Center to go over the 3A process. The meeting starts at 6:30. I'll have Jason Grow there and Jane Remsen there to be able to answer any questions for those who have anything. And to piggyback on what Councilor Nolan said, I think to residents, we're always in a hurry, but we do really need to slow down. Not just safety for others, but really for yourself. And I would like to, again, request a clock that will come down or up for those speaking, so they can sort of see the three-minute warning, so we won't have to interrupt them. I think sometimes they lose a train of thought, and I would just like that, just sort of be the three minutes, and then we can interrupt.
Thank you. Because it's stressful to be in that role.
I researched it, and there's no, I didn't find any real convenient thing that would allow us to display that, that they would actually see. That's what it would require as a scoreboard-type deal.
Councilor Memard.
In Ward One, I just want everyone to be well aware that we have visitors from the south. We have our nesting piping povers at Good Harbor Beach. They've arrived, and they're being protected with a symbolic fencing. No dogs are allowed on Good Harbor Beach. I drove by this afternoon, there was somebody walking their dog. But, you know, talk about following the signs. Stop, no dogs. Talking about also following the signs, a number of my residents on East Main Street and Wall Street had an unpleasant surprise this morning when a 48-foot tractor trailer truck with an extended cab followed their GPS from Parker Street and the State Fish Pier to get to the freezer on East Main Street via Wall Street. Wall Street is sort of like a, it's, well, it's like a cow path. And it, it needs, this is actually an issue that I've been aware of and brought to my attention since I first served as city councillor. We haven't solved the problem yet. GPS is our enemy. It says it's possible for an innocent, poor driver, in this case, he knocked down the stone wall, he knocked down a telephone pole, he disturbed signage, he blocked the traffic on East Main Street. They had to get out and have cars move to try and extricate him. This happens regularly. Wall Street's a private road. It's not a public way. So what, we need to work with the city, the DPW, and the Traffic Commission to help those residents to properly communicate that Wall Street is not a through-traffic way for 48-foot tractor trailer trucks with extended cabs trying to get from Parker Street to East Main Street, Americauld or freezer. Thirdly, I just want to say, thank you, thank you, thank you for the paving project that's proceeded on, on Mount Pleasant Avenue. All the sewer manholes have been raised, the sidewalks are pretty much put to bed. It's a very disruptive process. It's taken a long time. We're also working with National Grid on the gas line work, which continues on Atlantic Road. But, so it's been a busy neighborhood, but it'll look great and be in good condition for the summer. So thank you.
Councilor Worthley.
Yes, thank you, everybody. Want to congratulate the former Ward Four city councillor.
Sorry. All right. Go ahead, go ahead.
I want to congratulate...
Councilor Nolan's going to defer.
What, I don't mind going off, but I'm used to going last, so I don't mind waiting. I want to congratulate the former Ward Four councillor and the current Ward Four councillor for seeing through the change on Walnut Street. That was not easy and took a lot of patience. It's not this Monday, but before our next city council meeting is Memorial Day. I think we all got invitations. we all got invitations for the various events. My son Jude is volunteering for, I think, the third time now to play taps. And I just want to throw a little shout out to him for doing that. He loves participating and supporting our veterans and those who have passed. Beach stickers are for sale. I want to encourage people to get their beach sticker early, not often, because you can't do it more than once, but encourage people to do it early because it'll make it a lot easier for the Parks and Recreation staff. I want to thank the mayor. I put a request in last night that he addressed last night. I appreciate that prompt response. One thing we learned is that I had a constituent who wanted to put a request in and see click fix, and she thought she needed to register to do it. And she was worried about some sort of potential backlash. So she didn't know that you can actually put requests in anonymously through see fix. The mayor and the Health Department educated me and the constituent on that. Tomorrow does begin our Budget and Finance review of the budget, and it's going to be at least eight hours. It's going to be tedious. And I know you're looking forward to it, Councilor Gilman. I'm not sure how much I'm looking forward to the process, but the result, I think, will be a good one. But it is a arduous process, and I want to encourage the public to be part of it. And so we can all learn together. And then lastly, my head is spinning on the number of school events over the next few weeks, I'm sure. Councilor Majota, with children, is also aware. I can't keep track of them all right now, but I want to thank the teachers and the school administration and the parents for all that they do to participate in these events. Stay tuned, because there's a number of them coming. That's it for tonight. Thank you.
So, Councilor Nolan.
So I've I've no request from the mayor. I just want to make a few comments. This time of year is a very, very busy time of year for the city and setup, trying to get ready with all the parks, the beaches, cemeteries, and then also manage all the projects that can't be done during the winter. Not only just to the DPW employees, but I want to give a strong thank you to Mike Hale, who's kind of being the ringleader in everything that comes together at this time of year with all the paving projects, getting the crews together, trying to make sure that everything's prepared for an upcoming busy season. And it takes a lot of knowledge and experience to be able to do that. And I want to thank Mike Hale for that.
Council Benson.
Thank you, Council President. First off, I want to thank my, apologize to my esteemed colleagues for addressing so unprofessionally tonight. I was not at the last meeting, and I was aware of what had occurred, and I just want to make a brief statement. Council President Gross, Vice President Nolan, and my esteemed colleagues on the City Council, allow me a moment to address the recent hate that has come before this body. In recent weeks, this toxic, bigoted sentiment has spilled over into one of our city's committees. However, it is important to note that this type of hatred does not reflect the values of our community at large. And I and the majority of our community firmly reject such hostility and prejudice toward our fellow citizens. Tonight, I stand in solidarity with the Jewish community of Ward Two and the city as a whole, affirming that I am your ally. Similarly, to the trans community of Ward Two and beyond, I extend my unwavering support. Anti-Semitism and transphobia have no place, no place in this community. Further, any form of hatred, bigotry, or racism is unequivocally condemned and rejected, and it will not stand. Thank you. Also, if I could, sorry, I just want to thank DPW for, on another note, for for what they've been doing on Main Street. It's looking great. And I know our businesses are going to be appreciative of it now being, hopefully, done. Thank you.
entertain a motion to adjourn?
Second.
You need to speak in your microphones if you're going to make a motion.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Gross, seconded by Councilor Majota. He was first. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, eight to zero, one absent. Thank you very much, and good night, Gloucester.